They had a lane closed off with some things around it, but they're in a dip.
Give it a second, Don. It's showing. Today is the twenty ninth. Today is the twenty ninth.
Do that. He was saying, give it a second. It worked out good. Yeah. End screen.
I don't know why it's not showing it here, but.
But I'm showing on the computer, so it should be recording, right?
Yeah.
Because I'm not taking any questions right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, yeah. You're welcome to stay up here if you want, or you want to go down. It's up to you.
Stay up here.
In case I have a problem. Sure everybody's okay with that, right? Okay. All right, everybody ready? Tom, if anybody wants something to drink? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village of Walton Hills Planning Commission Meeting of June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh six P. M. Second Order of Business's Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Joe D'Amico.
Present.
Todd Toes.
Present.
Janice St. John.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
And myself, Don Colgraf. Mayor. Okay, item four. Well, first of all, all of Planning Commission present, along with, we do have two council members here also. Council President Jennifer Allen, Councilman Fred Nielsen. We do have our Street Commissioner, Zoning Inspector Rob Kalman here, along with our Village Engineer Joe Gelati, our Planning Consultant George Smarigan, and our Economic Development Consultant Tom Jordan. Okay, so we've got a pretty full house here. Item four, which is approval of minutes for May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mayor, I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of June twenty nine, or I'm sorry. What was what date?
May twenty fifth.
May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Todd Toes. Vote on the motion. Joe D'Amico.
Yes.
Todd Toes.
Yes.
Janice St. John.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Abstaining due to excuse absence from that meeting.
Okay. So minutes passed and approved. Any old business? Okay, I have no old business either. Nothing from the commission. Rob or Joe, anything? Or we good on old business? Okay. A new business? We are here tonight for preliminary site development plan from Independence Construction. And I will invite Annette's item oh two two oh five, seventy-eight forty-five Northfield Road, preliminary site development plan for parcel seven nine four dash thirty-eight dash zero zero one. So at this time, I'd like to ask those parties representing Independence Construction to come to the microphone and introduce yourself and who's with you and kind of tell us about why you're here, Matt, and stuff.
Sure. My name is Matthew Monicalvo. I'm the Civil and Environmental Manager for DeGeronimo Companies. We're one of the partners in the redevelopment of the former Ford Walton Hills campus. With me today is Mark Belmont from C E S O. They're our civil engineer. As Mayor said, we're going to kind of walk through a request. And as we go through, I've actually got some visual aids here. I know you've got some things in your packet as well. These will help to kind of supplement that. Just thinking about this, is there, is it going to disturb anyone if we move a little bit more front and center, so?
No, if that makes it better for the committee to see, we're good with that.
All right. So first of all, thank you, everyone, for meeting. I know this is outside of your regularly scheduled meeting time, and we really do appreciate the opportunity to come and present. As, as was noted in the, in the agenda, we're seeking preliminary approval. Sorry, we're seeking approval for our preliminary site plan for our first building that we're hoping to develop on the former Ford Walton Hills plant. So I thought it'd be interesting to kind of start out with a picture of what was there. And I mean that very literally because you can see the rubble down here. This literally was part of the old Ford plant. This is a picture that was taken by the drone, and it is the demolition in action. So this is where we stand, I would say, probably a week or so ago. The demolition still progresses. You know, the city has, the village has been made aware of our schedule. We're kind of moving right along that schedule. There's, there's not really been any hiccups or changes. As we go through the process, there's also environmental cleanup occurring, and we get our sign-offs from EPA and other entities as we go, and things have gone quite well. Again, as I noted, the preliminary site plan approval that we're seeking tonight is for a singular building that we are proposing to place in the northwest corner of the site. So well beyond the erected in this photo, up in that corner, so. This is not in your packet. This is a rendition of what we think the site could eventually look like as we built out the site. As you can see, there are five buildings totaling a little bit over one and a half million square feet. With that, we hope to attract at least one thousand five hundred new jobs to this site. Some of the aspects of the site that I think are very interesting from a site development standpoint, and I apologize if I'm a bit of a nerdy engineer, so I'm going to talk about things that maybe other folks might find less interesting. But one of the interesting things there is a very, a very interesting grade issue. So the building itself, you can kind of see it behind the new building back here. That building is essentially flat. The floor of that building is flat, so the grades are flat. Everything is flat. And as you come north, the site actually slopes quite a bit down towards Alexander Road. So the entire site, if it had been natural, would be just the gentle slope from the racetrack down to Alexander. So it's been heavily modified to put this one point eight, one point nine square million, million square foot building on, on the site. And so we're going to kind of take advantage of that, if you will. And that's where these three buildings come into play. And then as we move farther north, the buildings will be at a slightly lower elevation, but also still, because we've got such large buildings and need flat floors, there's going to be quite a bit of grading. This building down here in the corner, the proposed building number one, that's the building that we've come to talk about today. So that's the, the overall picture. You know, again, this is the only one that we're asking for any kind of consideration on today. The rest of this will remain somewhat fluid, adjusting to market conditions. Building sizes may change. Building uses may change. It just kind of depends on what comes to us in terms of opportunities and what comes to the community. Everything is going to be designed to current building codes and obviously zoning requirements, which is another one of the reasons why we appear before you is to make sure that all of those zoning requirements are met, and we have all of the pieces parts together that we need to. One of the things that is important to us, and in part, we know also important to the village, is that we'll know in the plan, it's a little hard to see. I'm going to leave these with the village so that, you know, you'll have an opportunity and folks will have an opportunity to see them in more detail later. But we've taken a sidewalk from this end of the site, on the north end of the site, and we've taken it all the way down to Alexander Road. So there'll be a sidewalk that is on Northfield Road, the entire distance of the property. It's good for a lot of reasons, but we're hoping that this drives a little bit more safety because we understand that, you know, the site's a bit of a transit between a couple of other locations, so we're going to add that. But it'll also be an amenity, we believe, to us as well. And I apologize. I'm usually not very good at going from a, from a list of things here, but I wanted to make sure that I hit everything. Let's take a look at the new building. You have in your packet, you have some elevations, I think, some colored elevations that were part.
Are you referring to this?
Yes, thank you. That's exactly.
Does everybody have that copy?
And so with those elevations, and then also with the site plan in front of you, you get a picture of what could be in this particular location. This particular building, two hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet, it's almost a thousand feet long, which doesn't sound like a lot until you realize that that one thousand feet length, the one thousand foot length has to be at the same elevation. And so some of the things that we've talked about over the course of, you know, the various conversations we've had with the village and the administration is this idea of grading the site. And the fact that, you know, as we mentioned a second ago, the site naturally grades south or north, it grades down, you know, on Port Alexander Road. So we'll be actually functionally moving soil so that we take soil from this end of the building and we place it on the north end of the building. This will then bring the grades closest to Alexander Road up, and it will bring the grades close to the existing building down. And so what you've got is a, is sort of a situation where now you've leveled this up. The loading docks are going to be located on the east side of the building. The parking on the west side, closest to Northfield Road. There's at least, and I believe from our calculation, there's at least eighty feet of buffer between the road right of way. So not necessarily edge of pavement, but the edge of the right of way for the roadway and the parking. One of the things you'll know from your elevations, it is a concrete construction painted, and it has relatively few frills. I would go so far as to say it could be sort of a plain building. On a personal level, I like the look. I think it's very clean. I think it is without any kind of distraction. And frankly, our tenants like that kind of thing as well. So it's starting out its life as a, just a very plain, sort of clean, brand-new building. One of the things that we do add and have done historically is landscaping to improve the visual appeal, but also to improve what the tenant experience is like. So now the things I wanted to try and do was give you a picture of other developments. So these buildings were constructed in the same manner or very similar manner than what we're talking constructing here in Walton Hills. These are, I believe, these were both precast panels. We're proposing tilt up, which will ultimately be the same thing. Once everything is vertical, it's just as a construction method difference, which I can explain if anybody's interested, but again, back to the old geek engineer. I find it very interesting. But you can see there's a difference here between paint colors. These lines that you'll see in the building are referred to as reveals. There's a difference in location of reveals, number, type, things of that nature. In this particular photograph, there's some very, very nice contrasting colors. There's also some additional window glazing. You can tell from your entrance. By the time you move off to the other side of the building, then that glazing disappears because it's not needed and frankly, in this particular case, not wanted by the tenant. It gives an opportunity for people to see in. It gives an opportunity for, you know, temperature variations that might be unwanted or expensive to manage in a building that size. This one, I think, gives a little bit of a picture of some of the landscaping, but also some of the access. This was a site road and apron, site lighting, things of that nature. So not a, not by any stretch, a, an old industrial site like what we, like what we're starting with. And in here, you can see this is actually a cluster of several buildings. One, two, three off in the distance. In fact, I think this one here was our little gray color. Come back here. And so you kind of get a picture of, you know, what the site might look like. Stormwater feature here. This is a stormwater detention basin. And all of these things kind of play together into the development. The reason that this is important to us is because this sets the stage for not only this building and gives us a nice slate to work from for attracting tenants, but it also helps solidify what the rest of the development is going to look like. We've talked about it before. Consistency, continuity, those things are very important. They're very important to us, but they're also important to tenants. People like to be located near similar or like businesses. These are going to be brand-new buildings. They're going to be easy to maintain. They're going to look good for a long time. We want to make sure that they have some sort of consistency across them. There's not really any benefit to us to wildly vary these things. Now, having said that, there are some variations. One of the things that goes in this prior picture. You can see some signage here. And I didn't bring, I didn't bring all of the hundred or so of those we've got. But there'll be also opportunities, if you look at your renderings, the, the elevation renderings, you can see on one page is the back of the building where you can see all the dock doors, nice evenly spaced right across from one another. But on another page, you'll actually be able to see, those are going to be the entrances. That's where you get the front of the building. This is what's going to face Northfield Road. This is where you're going to get some of that interest, some of that differentiating color, some of those extra reveals. And you've got the front entrances, so there'll be signage. Businesses are going to want to be signed, obviously within the, within the village ordinance, but they're going to want to have signage. And they're also going to want, most likely, to have a little bit different of an entrance, set themselves apart from their, from their neighbors, attract their customers, that kind of thing. So I would anticipate on it, on potentially some, if not many of those, there'd be additional blazing windows, canopies, things of that nature. Initially, we leave them very, again, very kind of straightforward, plain, allowing for the opportunity for the tenant to come in and kind of visualize their own space, but also to use the space they want. Industrial development's very different from office development. Office development, oftentimes, those buildings are very intricate. They're very attractive. They're working hard to attract people who are going to spend a lot of time sitting inside those walls doing work. In the industrial world, people are very interested in what's the inside like? Is it new? Is it clean? Do I have thirty-two feet of clear span for my storage? Do I have enough floor space for my machines? They're not really interested in paying for a lot of glitz and glamour. And so we start out with something relatively straightforward, and then we allow them to work with us to get to something better, if that's what's. So with that, I think now we can move on.
If anybody has any questions, just, you know.
All right. So what we've done is we've taken a little extra time and we have added the building, the roadways and the sidewalk in the location that you see on your plans. So if you're looking at this and you're saying to yourself, oh, gosh, there's an awful lot of distance between Northfield Road and the parking lot, that's to scale. That is what you're seeing on your drawing. If you're thinking that this looks like a big mound of soil, you're not wrong. It definitely is a big mound of soil. And that's how we have expanded this part of the site in order to accommodate the length of this building. And so we thought this was kind of an interesting perspective, and these will match up relatively well to the, to the elevations you've got in front of you. Again, this is the front.
So that is our, our corner there.
Yes, this is everything.
That rendering is our corner.
Yes. What is, what is not, what I would say what is not identical to your plans, we didn't take the time to take the landscape plans that are in your packet and translate those to this. So this is a little sparse compared to what is actually in the plan. And so this one, I think, is one of the more telling ones. This is essentially standing a few feet east on Alexander, looking up into the site. And the really interesting thing about this, first of all, I think it's a very cool perspective, but it's also one that is your average person is going to see as they drive by the site. It's a relatively shielded view. You know, and we, and in commercial and industrial development too, we, we work in a lot of communities that have, that have screening codes. So you have to screen your HVAC elements, for example, so that they can't be seen from the street and things like that. So these perspectives are very helpful to us to kind of get a picture of, you know, what are we actually going to be seeing from the street or the sidewalk? And you can see there's quite a raise. You can still see the entrance, but the cars aren't quite as visible. The landscaping is a little bit more apparent. And this, I think, is where the real opportunity comes in for, whether it be for some sort of signage or some sort of landscaping, to really kind of bring everything together. This is, this is the corner of the site. At this corner here. This is essentially, for us, it's undeveloped. We, we have a gas main, twenty-inch high-pressure gas main. It comes along, travels to north, along Northfield, and then cuts the corner and goes down Alexander Road. Well, it leaves a little pocket of land because you can't, gas mains, especially that size, you can't turn them at ninety-degree angles. You have to have a nice arc in there to make sure the pressures are good and the, and the utility stays intact and such. So there's this spot right in here that really doesn't have an opportunity for us to do anything with, other than make it look nice. That's our. So this gives you a picture too of both the entrance. Could also look like the landscaping. It's one thing to see in your packet, you know, you kind of see the, the little, the little bushes that are dotted along the edge, and it looks kind of uninteresting, but when you actually get to see it in three dimensions, you realize the size, you realize the shape of those and the color changes. There's, there's some, actually, there's some very good, very good opportunity there as well. So we try to take advantage of it. So that's the, kind of the proposal, I guess, in a nutshell, other than any other questions that you all might have, and I'm sure you've got plenty, but I just wanted to get through this. As far as timing goes, I wanted to mention that this is obviously our preliminary plan approval. But with this plan approval, it's our hope to go to the village and request a permit to grade the site. So in other words, to change the site grades and to get our stormwater controls in for this portion of the site. And then also to construct our foundations and our building pad. Now, there's some amount of risk to that, obviously, to us. We understand that. We're looking at this as a partnership with the village. We're trying to move things ahead. We've made a big investment in the site. We're going to make a big investment in this building. And we're ready to kind of walk that forward, but we want to do it with you. And so we'll take a little bit of risk. We'll get ourselves moving, but then we expect to appear back in front of you, maybe within thirty days, to talk about the final plan approval and the final, of final building permits. So from a timing standpoint, that's sort of what we're looking at. And I think with that, I have done way more talking than I needed to. So if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them as best, I think. And, and incidentally, Martin's here not just to help me not throw these things on the ground, but he's also our engineer. So if we get into anything technical and we need somebody who's got better handling that than I do.
And Matt, I don't think, did you kind of want to say your role with this whole project? I know, just to kind of let everybody know, I know, of course, the team has visited the site. We did, you did allow council and the Planning Commission two days with two hours each day to visit the site and kind of give us a chance to see visually what, what is in front of us, which I think really helped. I mean, that three D drawings helped, but also us understanding, just seeing the site helped. But just kind of explain your role with this project to, to the
Sure.
Some, you do have people watching and stuff.
Absolutely. So I mentioned earlier.
Residents watching.
That's right. I mentioned earlier that I am a Civil and Environmental Manager for DeGeronimo Companies. And DeGeronimo Companies is, as I mentioned, we're one of the three companies that joined together in a joint venture to purchase this property and redevelop it. The other companies are Skanel Properties out of Indianapolis and Westin, which is a local industrial development company. We are all in a position to bring a very, I guess, unique set of talents together. It's not a talent, I think, that many individual companies have, so that brought together the partnership. DeGeronimo Company's role in the, the project is really, we're, I would call us the boots on the ground. We're the, we're the company that has the experience through our independence excavating partner with site development work. Independence Construction builds buildings from the ground up, and they're the vertical construction component. Independence Demolition is a company that we also own and run. They are demolition experts. They do close to seventy-five million dollars of demolition work every year. We wreck everything from houses, literally, single-family homes, all the way up to power plants. So with that, we kind of bring that series of expertise together to pull the engineering and the planning together and get these projects off the ground and get them moving forward. Our partners are very involved in other aspects of the project, but in terms of what I think the village is most concerned with, outside of potentially leasing these properties, we have most of the, kind of the, the forward-facing tasks from the parks. Is that what you were?
That, that was, that was perfect. Okay. What I, before, I mean, unless anybody has any questions, just what I was going to do, we did receive as normal. I do have three letters. I won't read the whole thing. Maybe I'll read a little bit from, of course, Rob Kalman, our Village Zoning Inspector. our village zoning inspector and street commissioner, along with our village engineer, Joe Gelati, and also a letter from our planning consultant. With that, what you have in your packet. And we also do have a letter from acting fire chief Dave Tapp. So his is the shortest, so I can read his. And I'll just kind of read, just let him know. And they are here for record, and I know the commission's probably already reviewed them. But this is from our acting fire chief Dave Tapp, "To whom it may concern, the Oakwood Village Fire Department and the Fire Prevention Bureau have looked and approved the proposed drawings pertaining the widths of access roads and drives of the new proposed building at seventy-eight forty-five Northfield Road." I do have, I'm just going to go in the order I have them in here, no specific order. This is from Chagrin Valley Engineering, from Joe Gelati, our village engineer. Of course, he has a couple pages here. But I'm just going to read his conclusion, his conclusion "From an engineering perspective, and provided that the applicant addresses the above comments to the satisfaction of the planning commission, it is recommended the commission grant preliminary site plan approval." So that's from Mr. Gelati. And then I, the next one is from Rob Kalman and our street commissioner, building inspector, zoning inspector. I will read, I won't read his whole thing. He's got it pretty in-depth, too. But I'll read the last paragraph. "It is recommended the planning commission grants preliminary approval of the site plan and concrete tilt-up panel construction method in order for the applicant to attain a grading and foundation permit." And then the last one I have here is from George Smarigan, our planning consultant. And his is pretty lengthy, too. And I'll read his last paragraph. "It is recommended that the commission grant preliminary site development plan approval subject to the comments and recommendations of the village engineer and building department." But with that said, as you know, we put a team together that is working with their group. And there's been a lot of time spent, and will continue to be a lot of time spent, and everybody, as we move forward. And so there's a lot more to our letters of recommendation than just the last paragraph I read. Anybody that's all public record would want a copy of it. So with that said, then I was going to ask if Rob, Joe, or George, or even Tom, Jordan's here, our economic development consultant, also wanted to comment? Or if anybody has any questions for Matt at this time? Or you want to go ahead, George?
Having had a role in developing your zoning regulations for this project, I just wanted to point out that, you know, in my report, I have a kind of a box board that shows that they're going to meet all the setback requirements, the height requirement, all of that stuff. But I think the more critical thing is that by granting the preliminary site plan approval, you're essentially approving the building size, the building location, the general parking layout, the access point. And that allows them to keep moving with the mass grading and the foundation work. They need to come back to you for final site plan approvals. You're not turning the balloons for sure. And with final site plan approval, you will get into the detail about site lighting, site landscaping, the building facade treatment. All of those things are coming back to you as part of final site plan approval. What this does is it gives them enough concept approval that they can keep this project moving forward and stay on schedule. But you haven't, you haven't let anything go past that point that they need in order to continue working on the site. Those final approvals will all come back to you, and you will have that final opportunity to approve them, okay? The one other thing I'll mention, since you mentioned the partners in this, you're probably familiar with Weston and Independence, DeGronimo. Skanel is a very large industrial development outfit. They do work nationwide. I can tell you, since I, some of you are aware, I work for the City of Strongsville as well. They've done close to a million square feet worth of industrial buildings in the City of Strongsville in the last five years. So it's a big outfit. They're very capable. And this is what they do. And they're great at tenancying the buildings. That's their strength, and that's what they're going to bring to the table. And I just wanted to say that so that you understand who you're dealing with. And if you have questions for me, I'll be happy to try and address those. But I think they're following the regulations that we provided. And I just wanted to be clear for the folks that are home watching that this is not the final time you're going to see it. It's coming back to you. All you're doing is allowing them to get to the next step, okay?
Well, just one question for you, George, if you want to keep up there. I mean, just, and I, as you mentioned, George, you helped write the mixed-use zoning up there for the village.
Yes.
And I know you've been part of the team reviewing this. And it meets, as you stated in your letter, it meets all those...
They're meeting all of the requirements at this stage of the game. Now, obviously, we come back to find them. We've got to look at landscaping and lighting and all that. But for up to this point, the setbacks, the height, all those sort of things, they are meeting all of the standards that we put into the regulation. And as you recall, we spent a lot of time on it.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George? Whoever wants to go next, if you have something to add. If not, that's fine, too. Why don't you come up to the mic, Joe, because it does help.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, generally speaking, I'm in agreement with George. I'm moving forward with the preliminary site plan approval here for this project. You guys all have my memo of quickly, the way I put it together. I have five bullet points at the top. That's really just information for the record, for the commission, and really for everyone in the room to be aware of. Then I have just a couple of bullet points at the bottom, at least one of which Matt's already addressed. That was the need for a sidewalk on Northfield Road. So he's shown us that on the overall site plan, which is a good thing for the village. And the second one was regarding the existing fencing. And I think Matt has kind of answered that question here, too. As you know, the site is currently surrounded by a chain link barbed wire fence. Naturally, we don't want that to be around forever. You can see here on his rendering that obviously the fence is gone. Replaced with landscaping, I believe, to be fair. So that's all I have for the room, but my recommendation is the same.
Thank you, Joe. Of course, anybody watching, if they're not familiar, Mr. Gelati is our village engineer from Chagrin Valley, from Chagrin Valley Engineering. Rob, did you want to comment or anything? Or you're... Okay, that's... Good. Tom, did you, I know, Joe, you mentioned about the fence. I know Mr. Jordan's brought up the fence a few times, okay? I think Matt could comment on that, right, Matt?
So the fence is there. It's going to stay there for a while. The primary reason for the fence today is site security. Back to the demolition photo you saw, right? So once we get to a point where the environmental remediation is complete, the demolition is complete, and we're back to just construction, that's when we envision the fence will be able to come out and we'll be able to start opening up the site. But right now, it's just not safe. So that's why it stays. But Joe was exactly right. The ultimate plan is, and you didn't see in any of your plans, there's no decorative fencing, nothing like that. We're not planning on, you know, refencing this. Just to clarify that. I know that is important.
I mean, the, what you know from some of the meetings that we've had and stuff, it's our gateway. That corner is our gateway as you enter the village. So it's a big concern to all of us. We do want it to look nice. We do want it to be presentable. And you only get one opportunity to do it right. That's why we're all here tonight. And we want to make sure we do do it right. Anybody else have any questions or want to add anything? Matt, if, kind of give us, if you get, if we were to grant preliminary site, you know, the approval tonight, kind of maybe give us an idea of a schedule. I'm just kind of curious.
Sure, sure.
If you can, you know, that's...
If we're granted approval this evening, then about eight oh five AM, Joe will have an application on his desk for a grading permit. And once that process plays itself out, there's review. You know, he's got to look through all the engineering. Rob and company have, everything has to be approved at that level as well. Once that happens, you know, we could be ready to move earth in two or three weeks. So once that starts, the entire process is about thirteen or fourteen months from start to finish. And that's, you know, all the way through to final paving and landscaping. Probably the key, I think, milestone for us would be Labor Day. Labor Day is when all the panels that want to become walls get, would get poured and tilted into place. And sometime after that, probably six weeks or so, then we would start in on our steel erection, which is the roof sections. Not the actual roof itself, but the structural members of it. And then after that, it's off to the races.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I just have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
One question, as this relates to building one.
Yes.
And landscaping and the grading, and then to say the next building going south. How do you, how does that integration work with removing the fence and landscaping, not knowing when that next building? Will you guys be landscaping all the way through the southern line? Or how does that...
So the landscape plan that we would propose would be, I would say, unique to this building. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't be promoting additional landscaping, things like that. But as a function of the stormwater permitting that we have to do, as well as any grading, the site soils will be stabilized. So they'll be, essentially, think of it as a grassy field if time goes that long. But there, again, it's hard to say which one of those buildings would be next. And so, you know, as we build out, whether it be east along Alexander or south up Northfield, the objective would be a continuation of that landscape scheme. But in terms of the timing for that, it would come with the buildings as they go.
And similarly, as it relates to the exterior color selections and whatnot, is that driven by the builder or the final customer? You get a customer, who makes that choice?
Generally speaking, the builder, we do. And the color scheme that you have in your packet is relatively close to what we are proposing ultimately for the fund. I think part of the issue with that is just, one, we like the grays. They're neutral colors. That way, there's not a lot of rework and things like that. If tenants come in, they have different color schemes. But there's enough differentiation between those colors. But sometimes the printouts, they don't quite do it justice.
Thank you. Anybody else have any?
I don't have a question, but I find it rather amazing that you're going to build a quarter of a million-square-foot building in thirteen months.
It never ceases to amaze me either. I'll put it that way.
That's quite an accomplishment by any standard.
Thank you. We're looking forward to the challenge.
Would the other buildings be of a similar color? And would they be unique unto themselves? I mean...
Well, and that goes back to your question, actually. So if you remember the precedent photos, right? They were slightly different, right? One of those, actually, there was a FedEx building in one of the, in that photograph. They have a color scheme, and they pay for them. That's their requirement. That's part of their deal, and so that's what they get. But you'll know that they, while they had a color scheme, the patterning and the types of construction, they were all very simple. So while it differed from a color standpoint, the design, I'll use air quotes because I'm not an architect, the design is very similar, as you go across.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or maybe just a comment. I think this is really exciting for our village and welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you.
This has been a very, this has been a great process. And, you know, the village has been very, very helpful in terms of, you know, working with us to make sure that, you know, we understand what the code really is and the intent behind it and, you know, what we need to do in that order to make sure that we're able to bring to you, the commission, an approvable project, essentially.
So all in all, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing. But I have to say, I'm not a fan of the color. And that could be down the road, a discussion for down the road, correct? That doesn't have to be decided at this point. Just saying.
No, that's... Matt would rather know now. I'm sure your team would rather...
Most definitely.
And Janice, when you say that, I mean, not that we're, that's not what, but you mean what's in this part or what you're seeing on that rendering?
What I'm seeing on the rendering.
Okay, yeah, they're a little bit different. And again, that goes back to this is fun and glossy and kind of fuzzy. And that's a lot more, a lot more, I think, indicative of what the actual color scheme. But that is a good, actually...
Thank you. You had a picture, there was a blue, one of the first.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that looked really nice on the bottom.
And that has the gray in it as well.
Okay. Like, that seems to have more of a contrast than just a bland color scheme.
Anybody else have any? Councilwoman Jennifer Allen, Councilman John Nielsen?
I have already committed. I'm going to leave every single one of these with you. You can have them all.
Yeah, me and Matt talked about that and Joe, so... In fact, we can probably turn, we'll turn them around for the camera, in fact, and we can do that, too. But I like, I appreciate your 3D renderings because this one, and especially the other one. Matt, can you show us the other one again? That showed the corner, you know, really. You know, when we were at the site and we seen the drop, it's hard to envision. You know, to me, I was envisioning, you know, more like actually putting more attention on the building. But actually, it takes away a little bit of the building because it does hide the parking lot there and that, and our gateway there. Now, I know one of the things, just by bringing that up, and I think you mentioned, we were concerned, and I think it is in one of the Joe recommendations, was for some type of labeling of the industrial park, something to, something that's attractive, some kind of monument. I know sure all of us, the team, talked about that. And I know you're, you guys are aware of that. But I don't think at this time there is even a name for...
No, no, you're right. There's not an official name. There's lots of unofficial names. But we'd like to get away from just calling it the old Ford plant, frankly. But that, even that sort of sticks.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm trying to...
Internally, that's kind of how it's known, so... But you're right there. There's definitely an opportunity there. We recognize that, part of what you've said. And I think that whole process of naming and that kind of thing is still a little bit down the road. As you kind of probably guessed from the photos of the wrecking and the engineering plans that are so far developed for just this one building, we're sort of action-oriented, folks. So it's, sometimes it's a little hard to wrangle everybody in and have a conversation about things like naming because it's just, that's the lead, the less...
Just to mention, I know you, I think the commission understands, but it isn't a bad thing because I know... a bad thing, 'cause I know, as we move forward, even people in the office have asked us, 'cause everything says, "Draw Walton Hills." And I know I've had you explain that before, so if you just, just for people watching, what?
It's gonna be a trivial pursuit question.
Right, there you go.
And, and I think most of the commission has already heard this, but draw, if you look at it, it's actually Ford spelled backwards. You know, back to the creativity of engineers and contractors, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Matt, if you could just, I know we spoke at length on Monday, but back in regards to the colorings on the building, you were explaining to us when we were on-site with you about wanting the building to be very vanilla, since you don't have a definitive tenant at this point.
Yes, that, that's actually a strategy. Yeah, that, that is a, for multiple reasons, you know, one is, most folks that would come to look at a building like this as a potential home for their business, understand that they're not going to be leasing two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand square feet. They're gonna be leasing something less than that. And so, to know that they're going to have some continuity from their space to the next space is nice for them. And also, there's a certain amount of, of opportunity, especially when it comes to the entrances, landscaping, windows glazing, we refer to them as glazing, you know, for, for a future tenant to be able to kind of express themselves on the, in with the building. Now, again, all, you know, back to the whole, all within the color scheme, all within reason, obviously, they're, they're gonna be paying for these improvements, so, you know, those kinds of things usually get negotiated as part of the lease. But the ability for them to kind of make that space their own is, is really valuable to us. So from a leasing perspective, it actually is, is a big help to us. It sounds kind of counterintuitive, getting back to that Class A office space example, you know, people are, they're putting everything they possibly can into the skin of those buildings to get people in there. This is not quite the exact opposite, but it's very different in that regard. These folks are asking more about, you know, what's my clear span height, what's the, what's the, what's the efficiency of the AC units, what's the, you know, the pressure on the fire system, you know, what's the load requirements that you've got for the building for electricity? Those are the kinds of things they're interested in. So it's really the guts that are the, the important parts.
Okay. Any, everybody's good. I, I feel we've done a, a, a good job, along with the team. A lot of things, you know, people might not see it here, but I just wanna go back to it, and I appreciate that we did spend quite a bit of time at the site individually and as a group, which I think was invaluable. It, it really gave us a good opportunity to ask some questions, get a very good visual of how the building's gonna sit up there, and the length of it, the size of it. I mean, that shows it, but just when we got the idea that it went from one corner to the existing steel building that's up there now, really gave us a size, I, I know for myself a feel for the size of it. Well, who would like to make a motion? I might have a thing here, if that would help. I always make one against and one for, so if anybody would like.
You better written that up.
Yeah, that always helps. Are we at that point? Are we ready to?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary site plan approval pending administrative review and approval for a grading-only permit and for a foundation permit, and further approving the concrete tilt-up panel method of building construction.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Janice St. John. We will vote on the motion now. Joe D'Amico.
Yes.
Todd Toez.
Yes.
Janice St. John.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Yes.
And Mayor Cole, Don Cullagraf. Yes. Motion passes five zero. Oh-two-two dash oh-five dash seven-eight, seven-eight four-five, Northfield Road, Preliminary Site Development Plan for Parcel Seven-nine-four dash three-eight, three-eight dash oh-oh-one is approved. Okay. Any, any thing else, any other business, or I'll ask for a motion for adjournment? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second? Joe D'Amico?
Yes.
Todd Toez?
Yes.
Janice St. John?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Don Cullagraf, yes. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, um, we just, you mentioned, right? Turn it around for, for a minute before we, or you already?
No, I did not, I did not.
Okay. Just for a second, and, um. Yeah, we put it up in the corner there, and, I think, yeah, just.
If you put it closer, if you put it closer to the other side of the table, it would be easier, it would be closer to the camera.
You're done with the placement? You're taking the answer? Yeah. Be over there framing away here in a week or two. You gotta help, yeah. You want a menu, sure. He gets surprised at all, if it's anybody.
Okay, I finally broke down and asked somebody to come in and do fertilizer and leaf killer. I was getting to the point where I know they may be giving a bit of a thing to you and all that. You know, a little bit, but then it was overtaking the whole barn, and I thought all the time, if the mother is dead. But if you could just move it closer to the camera, yeah. That cover is expensive over here.
It's going to hell out.
That's just too expensive.
And that's a low removal.
No, that's, yes. I'm not quite sure what I'm gonna do with that.
That's the corner view.
I think they qualify for things of drawing though, 'cause I'm.
I don't know how many dryways he's finished.
No.
When I kind of got out. That is an aerial view of the corner.
Do you have to, you have never been on a work day, or have you guys?
No, we're working from home.
And this is the view standing in the park lot.
Most of the time, I go in the office one day and work.
I was working, I was still working.
Great, thank you guys very much.
Privy. Privy.
You would think, but still, you have to work, you know?
Yeah, I know.
You gotta work, but at least you can get out, walk around.
I'm gonna shut this on. Yeah. You know, just cutting out.